Everyone, welcome to the Franklin Board of Education meeting for Wednesday, February 21st, 2024. Meeting has been properly posted. Can we have a roll call, please?
Yes.
Mr. Sprague.
Here.
I am here. Mrs. Wackowski.
Here.
Dr. Kahn.
Here.
Mrs. Sapursky.
Here.
Mrs. Yank.
Here.
And Mrs. Larson is excused.
Thank you. We have to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion was made by Mrs. Wackowski, seconded by Dr. Kahn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Thank you. Robinwood School Presentation, Ms. Bombian, please.
All right. So, good evening. We're excited to be here to talk through what we've been doing over at Robinwood. So I have three students representing Robinwood today, my two instructional coaches, and my two wonderful sit team members, and our interim principal, Dr. Dahl. So if you want to go ahead and...
Oh.
Please.
All right. Try not to get emotional because Robinwood is in my heart. So, as you know, hopefully all our girls went to Robinwood. That's where I got my start as a volunteer, and you can see where that's led. So, in 2021, under the previous principle, Robinwood Elementary was named a national blue ribbon school and an exemplary high performing school. The next principal, Mrs. Bombian, continued that legacy of excellence in leadership, innovation, and progress in closing student achievement gaps. She focused on student engagement, on empathy, she focused student engagement on empathy and kindness while supporting her staff and sharing and celebrating their successes. She also emphasized a whole team approach involving all parts of the curriculum to improve literacy and vocabulary skills in Robinwood's learners. Tonight, Mrs. Bombian is going to discuss how they got to the point of implementing the Freyer model, which you'll see in a second, models, model school, how they got the implementation school-wide, the impact of this model on the encore classes, and the students will talk about carryover in the classroom and encore environments. We wish her every success in her new role and look forward to the new Robinwood principal continuing the tradition of excellence at Robinwood. It's with great gratitude and pride that I introduce Mrs. Janine Bombian and her students.
All right. So, just a visual, I'm going to talk to the slide, but this is our amazing sit team. So, two members, three, four members sit here today, but there is a lot more power in numbers. So our team is representative of each grade level and specialty area. So Mrs. Reinders, who's here today, represents our encore teachers. And Ms. Jenny Palachek, she represents English language learners, which she gets to see all the grades. So it's a wonderful addition to our, our team. Ms. Miller will talk through this next slide.
All right, I'm Sarah Miller. I'm the instructional coach for Robinwood, or one of them. And so, last year, the instructional coach role shifted and we became building-based rather than district-wide, content-specific. And so I spent my first half of last year really digging into the data that we had at Robinwood to explore what our story told so far and where we might get to head next. And so that really lives in the study piece and the first part of our data there. And so, once we got to winter and received our map data, I had noticed some patterns emerging. And one of those patterns was that within the literacy map data, which is organized into different subskills, our vocabulary acquisition and use subskill had trended a little bit lower than the other subskills over time. And so I got really curious about that and began talking about that with staff members to really see what their understanding was, what were some of the things that they were doing to build our students' vocabulary acquisition and use, and how that paired with the standards that we were digging into with literacy. And so, as a staff, we all got really curious about this data. Fast forward to this past summer's Data Summit that our sit teams all took part in, and our sit team decided that they were ready to act on that data. And so when we set our first building goal of focusing on literacy, student achievement and literacy, they really wanted to focus very specifically on vocabulary acquisition and use, knowing that we could improve that data and try some new things as a staff. And so we got plan, planning in action, and they determined that they wanted to learn more about what some of those vocabulary acquisition strategies were and how students could use that in the classroom and how teachers could facilitate that study of vocabulary. And so, the next step on our timeline, August through October of this fall, we went into the do phase of our Plan Do Study Act improvement cycle. And so we focused all of our staff professional learning within the building as well as staff meetings, really around learning about those multiple strategies that you can use to help your students acquire vocabulary and use it more frequently in the classroom. And after we spent time doing that, then we came back and studied how that was going as a sit team. And in November, the sit team, while studying it, determined that, wow, we have learned a lot of different vocabulary strategies. There's so many neat things you can do, but we didn't necessarily feel like we were getting really good at any of them or have something cohesive across the building that we could all really anchor to. And so the sit team decided that they really wanted to pivot our plan and do something that could be building-wide and get really good at one thing for both our staff and our students. And so they decided as a sit team to reflect on all of the vocabulary strategies we'd been learning about and really anchor in one of them. And that was the Freyer model strategy, which Jenny will be sharing a little bit about later. And so, moving forward from November, so in December and January, building-wide, we moved into planning and doing. So all of our teachers across all content areas and grade levels went all in on using that Freyer model with their students to help them develop their vocabulary acquisition subskill. And then, in February, just two weeks ago, our sit team came back together to analyze our winter map data to see how it was going. We wanted to study our efforts and see if it was making an impact. And it was really exciting to see that at almost all of the grade levels, our vocabulary acquisition subskill scores went up and in many areas pretty dramatically. So it was very exciting to see that one thing that we put our focus on made such a really great impact. And for the couple of grade levels where it hadn't necessarily gone up in the way that it wanted to, it was still their highest subskill score. So still making a really big impact on what they're doing. And so staff got really excited about that, shared that with their broader PLC-level teams, and then determined some next steps on what they want to do to help continue to grow that from now until the end of the year to make even more of an impact in the time remaining this school year. That kind of tells the story of the data that we've studied, we've built our data literacy, and some of the action steps that came out of that.
So, in order to show kind of the building-wide impact that our sit team focused on, we just have some identified specific strategic moves that we, as a sit team, identified were going to be the most impactful. So, that's the story, but all of the granular, smaller pebbles in that story are these main ideas here. So, high-performing teams was something that we started talking about last year and continued that. Robinwood being a new team in each grade level last year and the continued efforts at the district level with it being a tactic of district-wide being a higher-performing team, there's always room for that improvement. So we pushed that through and continued that with not only our sit team, but our grade level teams, which is the PLC, and then myself and Dan and Sarah as our instructional leadership team as well. So those were very specific focus points of our agenda, and we're monitoring and watching our progress monthly in those groups. We also had focus PD, so making sure that we are serving all of our stakeholders during our professional learning time. A lot of times, we look at map data, and our encore teachers don't have map data per se, they see every child, and so I would never hand them every grade level's report and expect them to make any sense of it because it's just too much. So as we planned, we were really focusing on how do we really hone in on that vocabulary use and how does that impact their work in Fayad, music, and art? So, again, we are all instructor, teachers of learning and how do, of reading, I'm sorry, and how do we focus on that during our PD time as well? So, that's how we figured out how to embed everyone in our PD. Dan is going to talk to you a little bit about Freyer model for everyone.
Hi, so I'm Dan Elwesworth. I'm one of the other instructional coaches at Robinwood, primarily for, I work in the Student Services Department, so I'm across three buildings. And so, this was really exciting work because I think sometimes we have these really important specific strategies that are targeted things for our learners that might be struggling or need individualized supports. And so, something like the Freyer model was something that our, Jenny, our EL teacher, was very familiar with and was typically applied and used for students that might be English language learners. Or our special education team might be using it to build vocabulary for a student that might have a reading learning disability. So what's really exciting about this work and making it building-wide, you know, I think as the saying goes, like a rising tide raises all boats, and really targeted things that we use for students, they're still going to get those individual targeted supports that they might need, but then they're going to see it in their classroom, they're going to see it school-wide, it's going to help generalize, and that really is the best way that we're going to start to close gaps specifically around some of those data points that we've identified that we need to work on. But then also, it does build the background knowledge for all students. And getting students to generalize these strategies across their whole school day is going to be the best way that we make sure we build background knowledge, which is a core component of the science of reading. So, as Janine had said, making sure that all staff members are teachers of reading is a really important component. And as well, show examples of it, what students saw it in art, they saw it in music, there's content-specific vocabulary in those subjects as well as in math, as well as those learners that might need that targeted instruction are going to get it on top of that. So it really layers in all of the different supports that students might need and then applies it to that whole building level so that we're raising all of our vocabulary and literacy data, but then also those individual learners, we're starting to close those gaps as well.
And I'm going to talk to you about examples and how different grade levels are using the Freyer model.
I am Jenny Palachek, sorry, by the way. I'm the EL teacher at Robinwood. But I'm going to just give this to you guys to have more examples and visuals. There's something in there for every grade level encore and math also. I'm going to sit with you. All right. So, as you can see on the slide, there is different Freyer models, and even 4K figured out a nice way for the multimodal learners, like a visual aspect of the Freyer model to learn numbers and letters. And they are using Velcro, and it could be an individual activity, it could be a teacher activity, it is very flexible, a very flexible tool from a student's standpoint, but also from a teacher's standpoint. So, this Freyer model, for example, doesn't have any headings because they are really focusing on one letter for each box, for example, but they're using environmental print, vocabulary, names, sounds, letter formations, so just kind of exposing them to all kinds of literacy skills. Then K5, one example was they used it for number bonds, like the whole can be in different places, but it's still a number bond and we still need part, part, whole. Then the next slide should show first grade social studies. They used it actually on the computer, whole group, and they talked about environment and the teacher would slide it in. So it was a teacher-led moment for this one. Third grade, there's one example of science. They came across a word and stopped and said, let's figure out what this means. And the teacher wrote down with the headings of definition, facts, examples, and non-examples what the word would mean. So as you can see, it's very flexible. Teachers have their own voice in it. They can decide what kind of headings they want to use, do they want students to use a word in a sentence. This fourth grade team, actually all three fourth grade classes did an introduction of each student or like a more about me Freyer model, where each student had some freedom in introducing themselves and deciding if they wanted to talk about likes and dislikes or I'm good at or not good at something. And it's actually also hanging in the hallway, which is kind of cute, different colors. And then, we are heading it over to second grade, they are sharing their example, or how they use it in the class.
All right, so Ms. Emily is going to start first.
Your parents can come up to the side of this.
Yep. All right, Emily, go forth.
This Freyer model is teaching us about consonants. We use this every day to help learn words. I use this Freyer model to help me spell words during writing time.
Okay. This Freyer model is teaching us about nouns. I use this to help me learn what nouns are. We keep these in our desk and pull them out if we, if we forget what a word means.
Next slide will be good.
In fifth grade, we use the Freyer model in different ways. This example is during read aloud with the teacher. We worked in small groups and were assigned a vocabulary word to identify from the story. As a group, we researched the word to complete the Freyer model. I use the Freyer model to help me understand words that I may not know when I'm reading. It helps me learn the definition and I will to better understand the story I am reading.
Excuse my voice, I've been teaching music all day, right, guys? They know it. So one thing that we were excited about, and I'm Lyndi Reinders, by the way, music at Robinwood, one thing that we were really excited about in Fayad, art, and music, is how quickly we could adapt it for our subject areas as well. And we were actually the first ones to implement it before it went to the classrooms. So when the kids saw it in the classrooms, they were saying, hey, we saw this in music, we saw this in art, we saw this in Fayad. I don't have the Fayad example up there, but Mr. Bauer used sportsmanship as his, which was kind of a nice overarching theme for the year, obviously. Art and music used it initially to introduce the brand-new unit that we started at the beginning of December for our second trimester. So a lot of sculpture was going on in art at that time, and we started our create unit in music and all the different ways to create. You can see in music there of defining it, giving it in a sentence, and then I actually have a little sound bite that we listened to for that grade, some non-examples so they understand the opposite. And then I always try to make outside of the music connection, so like where else would we be creating in the world? And for fifth grade, we were talking about the careers of, in architecture, like you have to be an amazing inventor and creator to be able to work in architecture. The next slide, I think, shows just a tiny bit more. As we got into the rest of the trimester, then I had my fourth and fifth graders use it actually as a template to help them create using folktales and adding music to their folktales, like a podcast or an audio radio show. And this was an unexpected surprise for me. So, when they did it, they had to select rhythms, melodies, sound effects, and also body percussion or voice percussive sounds to add to their stories. And as they were creating and I was walking around and supervising what they were doing and just kind of guiding them through, I noticed many times, in the melodies area, they were putting rhythm-only instruments. They were putting instruments like wood blocks and tambourines that make no pitch at all. So it was kind of a red flag for me to do a circle back on like a little mini lesson of, hey, let's remind ourselves what a melody is and what pitches are and what instruments actually create those. So it taught me a lot implementing this in a new and creative way and for me to use it in a formative way for my assessment.
And the last slide is a very special Franklin Public Schools edition of a Freyer model. So, simple, but also very specific to what we've been learning at Robinwood. So that is, everyone has a copy of that, so take home gift from Robinwood to you guys. But we appreciate the time and we're super proud of all of our hard work that our teachers and students have been doing. So thank you for the time to share that with you all tonight.
One fun fact to share, just because I forgot, it is actually a strategy that came from UW Madison, so it is a, this is a strategy.
Just keep it on the table for, oh, that's fine. Yep, whole team.
You guys are welcome to grab. Monica, get in there.
Good job, team.
You're going to take a lot of pictures at once, so forward here.
Good job, Robinwood.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you, Robinwood. Thank you, Dr. Dahl, for joining us and welcome.
Yeah, thank you. So, Dr. Dahl, if you want to give a good wave to the board, I know you're going to head out, but they haven't been able to meet our intern for Robinwood yet, so thank you for being here tonight also. Thank you, Janine. Good night.
All right, nobody has signed up for community comments, so we will skip to number six. I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion was made by Mrs. Sapursky, seconded by Mrs. Yank. All in favor? Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Thank you. School Board calendar, there's the last community listening session on Thursday, February 22nd, tomorrow at Franklin City Hall during Senior Dine at 10:30 a.m. School Board Workshop, Wednesday, February 28th, 2024, at the ECC at 6:00. Board of Education meeting on both March 6th and 20th at the ECC at 6:00. And School Board Workshop, Monday, March 18th, at the ECC at 5:30. District Administrator update, Mrs. Bennen, please.
All right. Thank you to Robinwood for being with us tonight. Happy birthday to Mary Yank, who's also celebrating with us tonight, what better way? So, a couple of exciting things going on in the community. So this year, we've started a Franklin Community Series at the Sabre Center. So our first show in that series is this Saturday, the Celtic Angels Ireland, which is Irish singing, dancing, and performances. So if you buy tickets right now and use the code IRLAND, you get 50% off your second ticket. So hopefully, if you're looking for a fun night out, that's this Saturday at the Sabre Center. Mr. Sprague talked a little bit about Franklin Forward and our next steps, so you've heard a lot about it, but just to keep us up to date, like he said, tomorrow, we're at Senior Dine at the City Hall for our final scheduled engagement session at this time. Next week, the Board's together on Wednesday night to start looking at what does the survey look like that's going out to the whole community in April. In March, visiting the Franklin Forward website could be really exciting if you're looking for something to do. A lot of our presentations and videos from board meetings are already located there. We'll also be adding a video from the community engagement sessions and some videos that showcase a few of the areas at the high school that we're looking at recommending for improving this space and the opportunity for learners. So a great place to visit if you're looking for things, Frequently Asked Questions, FAQ will also be added and a place to submit questions or wonderings you may have so we can offer clarity. April, this survey will hit all of the mailboxes in Franklin for those that are in the Franklin School District to gain more feedback from the community so that the Board can come together with that information and come to resolution to determine next best steps. So a couple of busy months ahead of us, but exciting for the community. For most of us, I think we were able to visit and enjoy Culture Fest last week. It was a record-breaking attendance, over 800. It was a great opportunity for visual, performing, and culinary arts of different cultures to really be exposed. What I think's really interesting, and maybe we don't always talk about as much as we could, is that there's 38 different languages that are the first language in homes of our families. And I looked at like really how to break that down, we looked at with Sue McCutcheon, who's our Power School guru, that's 425 families. In our community, we have just over 2,800 families. So 15% of our families are homes that English isn't the first language. And I think that's really important to know. And what was really neat to watch, walking through Culture Fest, it was a lot of families and students, but it was also a lot of people in our community that don't have students in the system anymore, maybe never have, that have found it as an event to come out and celebrate community and learn more. So if you have never done this, like gone to Culture Fest, it's definitely something to add to your calendar next year. Our top five languages in homes is Arabic's number one at 5% of our homes, Urdu, and I apologize if I'm saying that wrong, thank you, 44 families, so 2%. The third is tied with Spanish and Punjabi or Punjabi, and that's 37 families. And our fifth-most spoke language in homes is Chinese with 28 families. Top five out of 38, but I think it's really interesting to know, especially that 15% of our families. And when we really looked at, look at our different schools, that's a little bit different by school. So when we look at things like the Freyer model, it's really important that we're finding those different strategies that reach a variety of learners and help them feel like they're welcome and learning in school. Couple other moments of pride for winter athletic seasons that have kind of closed up or coming close to it at this time of year. High school boys swim and dive, earn multiple state awards, I have to read them because there's a lot. They took eighth place at state with numerous individual and team accomplishments, including six All-State, five All-American, one state champion, which is the first ever individual for swim and dive in Franklin history. We had five top-four finishes and five new school records. Wow. So very good show, and congratulations to Boys Swim and Dive. Franklin High School Wrestling had sectionals last weekend. They were a runner-up, but we had eight individuals that qualified for individual state wrestling, which will take place, I think, starting tonight already or tomorrow night, I forget how state wrestling works. Definitely enjoyed it with a brother that wrestled there. And FHS Cheer Team, sorry, struggling talking tonight, Cheer Team qualified for state last weekend in the Varsity Large Traditional Competition. So they also had to state this weekend. So a lot of great celebrations in Franklin.
Thank you. I really thought the change was good for, for the Culture Fest of February from May. It seemed like it was a little busy last year, so, whom that may concern.
Unless you get free food with the Culture Fest.
There was so much amazing food, a lot of food.
All right. Reports, presentations, and other board business. Wisconsin General Records Retention Adoption, Ms. Lankur, please.
Yeah, good evening. So this is an item that was brought before the Board last meeting, and we went through any questions that may have come up. So this evening, we are just looking for the Board to approve our new records retention policies.
I move to adopt the 10 general records schedules, including administrative records, budget records, facilities records, fiscal and accounting records, fleet and aircraft management records, human resources records, information technology records, payroll and benefits records, purchasing and procurement records, and risk management records that were separated from the Wisconsin School District schedule.
Second.
All right, motion was made by Dr. Beer, seconded by Mrs. Sapursky. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Thank you. All right, Policies 5122, 5363, and 5316. Linda, we talked about these last week. Did you have any questions of these, otherwise we may?
No, I didn't have any questions, I would have asked.
Okay. Great, thank you. I move to approve, excuse me, I'm looking for a motion.
I motion to approve to retire Policy 5363, Emergency School Closings, and Policy 5122, Admission of Expelled Students, as presented. I'll second.
All right, motion was made by Mrs. Sapursky, seconded by Mrs. Yank. All in favor? Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. And we have another motion.
Yep. I move to approve School Board Policy 5316, as presented.
Second.
All right, motion was made by Mrs. Sapursky, seconded by Dr. Beer. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Thank you. School Board liaison reports. School and community engagement reports.
I would have talked about Culture Fest, but I think we've hit that.
Yeah, I agree, it was a, it was a great event. I really liked that so many people are involved on the stage as well as having it flow through the comments, so.
I thought the whole setup this year was better than before, too.
Absolutely.
A lot for good flow of people not so crowded.
I love that event, that that event is completely student-driven. Right back in the day at Southwood Glen, I had a little one. And it was run by the PTA. It never really took off quite as much. This, I think, because it is driven by the students, it has sort of a life that it wouldn't otherwise, so it's nice.
All right, anybody else? All right, thank you. Future agenda items. 51st Street stoplight, we'll be talking about soon. Sullivan Stadium, FHS gym scoreboard and sponsorships. Summer/fall 2024, early college credit and start college now request approvals. Debt deficits information. Policies 5610, 6100, 6480, 6711, 6721, 6712, and 4004. Franklin High School presentation, health insurance update, board clerks report for the election notice and notice of ballot positions, at-risk report, district administrator self-evaluation. School board member comments. Does anybody have any comments?
What's involved with the scoreboard thing? Is there policy around this or what are we, just in general, what is that topic gonna be about?
It's just as it says in there, looking at new scoreboards with sponsorship from the community. So there'll be a report on sponsorships that have been secured for that.
Okay. And can we, when we list the policies, the numbers have no meaning. Can we list some title of what those policies are when we?
Sure, we can add that.
All right, anyone else? I'm looking for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved. Second.
Motion is made by Mrs. Sapursky, seconded by Mrs. Yank. All in favor? Aye. Opposed. We are adjourned at 6:33 p.m. Thank you, everyone.